If there's a reason that they would get some revenue off of it, then yes, they can incur the expense.
The issue right kind of happens is we've already got somebody out there, companies make this for these vehicles already. The towing company will have to take that to their lot prior until such time as we get a title of some sort. And that normally they charge daily rental fees to have to store that vehicle, plus the towing. So I think we need to take kind of a slow approach, like you say, sample of the one. I've already got a bunch of basic orders out there on some of these properties and we can't take it to landfill till we have some type of a title, but it's a salvage title, but it's a broker title, signed over. So in fact, it could take, it's not going to want you to take an additional thirty days. So let's say we have storage fees for some of these cars for up to two months, plus the towing fee. And as a renter of a property, I don't want to see a slowdown on tolling anymore be of them until we know that we can get this accomplished. But some type of a revenue stream or not without a tremendous cost to the city.
Right. And that's why I think we should just take it one vehicle at a time. Start with what we think would be the easiest case and then go about it that way. And be able to lay out our options and just go from there.
So I think I have sort of a question and a comment between what these two gentlemen have said. So this could wind up being a wash, not making any money, or it could cost us?
It's going to cost us to abate a property. There's no question about that. The question and the issue is when the city has done this in the past, they've ended up with vehicles they cannot dispose of. And the city has no business or place holding junk vehicles indefinitely. Because without a title, we can't surrender. So the research is based on if we do abate this, at the very least, can we do it in a way that we're not stuck with junk cars? Where we can dispose of them. The costs to abate a property go back to the property owner. If they don't pay it, it's much like a utility bill, isn't it, where we then leave the property? And go from there. It's just, we want to make sure we can complete the process. So I couldn't kind of get stuck halfway like the city's done in the past where they've evaded the property and then they've got these vehicles they don't want to deal with. Because then they're in the same position as the property owner. Broker title on vehicles, they can't dispose of them. Does that make sense? Did I say that right?
You said you've already set up an account with EBU and Jet?
We just, we just filed the application. So it should take three classes and say, isn't it?
Do you want to just table this until the process is done? Or do you want, do you want us to make a motion to do at least a separate run? What would you, what do you think we need to do here?
Sure. The motion would be at this point, the account is set up was free. We just had to pay.
It is free for government bodies.
And that is so that if we can find the title owner of the vehicle, that short circuits this whole problem. Because then we've got a title of hand, or we know what we can get. And that's the best option.
Yes.
The problem would be if we did this search and nobody comes up and then what do we do? And then we have to proceed with some of these other options with the attorney to review search.
You know, I think the second item, right after the attorney's done, you know, there's dealing with the property jet owner. They're working out of two all in August. There's a good sample right there. I mean sheriff can just go on there, look at the VIN number, run it through the ad aviation. Okay, so that's, you know, so here it is.
Yeah.
I disagree with Councilman Spear with all respect, but just start rolling. You know, we're on to this right now. Just grab one of this and run it and see what happens.
That's a easy sample before we get a whole bunch of them stuck up there.
Would that, would that be an appropriate motion for the side?
And that is what I was proposing, is that we start one case. So I think that would be.
Do we, we have a motion to that effect?
I don't, I don't second that motion.
Well, someone needs to.
Oh, I need to make a motion. Make a motion, we go to the attorney, now we're in the recommendation.
Okay. Motion for Captain Hall. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second for Councilman Spear. Further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Item two, council member, city clerk, lead discussion for possible action. Approval of abatement action to approve the removal of junk abandoned vehicles and commercial sign on private property located two oh one hundred and eighty in Nevada, APM zero zero one dash one two five dash zero six.
And Mayor Roberts, just for the record, the estate of Robert Miller owns that property. And that estate is free to life, it will be for the citizens.
That's it? All right, okay.
Well, basically, Robert no longer owns that property. It's a group of people from Armenia.
With all due respect, Mr. Peter, my county treasurer's office reports that it's still in his name. And his estate is one of the free to life that will be for that.
Well, it shouldn't be. He bought the building with a couple of our Armenian friends, a hundred twenty eight thousand dollars. They'd rather invest in this country than basically a Russian occupied country, so I trust their judgment.
That being the case, Mr. Peter, did you have some other information on this?
Oh, yes, I do. Four of those vehicles are all, basically the titles in the hands of Mr. Tom Bath. That's who he should be speaking to or sending a letter to, because he owns four of those vehicles, including that blue truck. That was dragged over there and I didn't even know it was there until it all of a sudden appeared in the back. So anyway, and one vehicle is leaving this next week. It's a van that actually does run, so if Mr. Bath was to operate, we could get rid of four vehicles. And basically, three of them could be, they put a battery in them, we can get them actually operating. So we can assume the tires are okay. So they're not really junk vehicles and he owns the title for those. And they're roadworthy vehicles, if he puts a battery in. And thus might work on light tires, for example. And they've sat there for, let's see, thirteen years, some of them. And the people that formerly owned them, on two of the vehicles, they're, he's dead. He's the guy that was a potpourri up here on Fay Avenue at the time. He died from smoking too much marijuana and that. So anyway, that's the person who owned two of those vehicles, the vans. And the title went to Mr. Bath.
So, and we, the attorney and I did have some discussion on this kind of issue as well. Because we're abating property and vehicles, just as an example, if someone has a piece of property with a vehicle on it and they get the letter, regardless of who the vehicle belongs to, the property owner is responsible for either getting that vehicle or?
I don't seem to have any call with Mr. Bath. I've been back home at least ten times. That we need to get rid of vehicles and all signs, which are obviously not ours. When he owned, when he owned General Bell, he put those signs there. He was usually guessing they empty lot, you know, a place to store things. And I objected to that, but I didn't want to say because I didn't own the property. So I, well, he was minding the property, but still, he had a million over property. So the thing is, is that we seem to be like helpless to get rid of these things. And my new partners want to get rid of all that. We don't want, we don't want vehicles in the back, even if they're running. I don't know what else I could tell you. We can clean up the place from the.
And a number of the council has made note of that. They certainly appreciate your efforts.
We're going to keep it that way. We got to disow the in the back to some of these. That recent raise has popped up everything.
Right. What is the recourse, test recourse here then?
I mean, it's a tough issue. I think still just go through the process, check to see if it is, if those titles do belong to Mr. Bath.
They do.
And then go from there. We could send Bath a notice, Mr. Bath a notice that he needs to obtain a legal title.
Does that, does that put us, I still kind of feel that that puts us, the city in the position of doing the property owner's work if we're contacting vehicle owners, just because that's.
Well, he responds to authority, believe me. If you tell him that there's a problem, he doesn't want to have it hang over his head either. But so far, he's had no notices from the city, really.
The vehicles are not the issue. It's where the vehicles are is the issue.
Right.
And that's, that's the property owner's issue. Now, if we, if we take the vehicles and then part of the due process is notifying the public that we have these or notifying them, we have them, we were going to abate them, and we're going to dispose of them. If you don't come remove them from us and this property owner, once we have them, is that?
That's correct.
The best way that would be?
And if any, if the property owner has to incur any costs, that it would be, owners don't property owners, but the legal process is for them to then sue the owner of the vehicle for those costs.
We really don't have a lot of excess cash to do all of this. We're spending on the infrastructure of that building. And we're trying to bring all the new doors on the, on the building. And we're trying to get rid of all the excess trash we have inside the building from previous ventures. And we're going to be doing painting of the building, a new roof, all kinds of things. It's going to cost us a half a million dollars. And we don't need to have all these other little petty things hanging over our heads.
What is the, what is the will of the council on this, given that information?
I'm going to move back. I like the idea of what we talked about the previous one. And when we, by now, Mr. Peter's statement, it don't belong to Tom Bath, but we have that, we don't all have a certain, that's what he's saying. It's on his property. Why couldn't we do all, or then vehicle, run through the DMV? And if it does come back to Mr. Bath owns them, then send him a letter that we need the titles of these vehicles. And, or we're going to get junk, whatever we want to do at the next step. But right now, this is, these are sitting there, the lot's cleaned up, recently aggravated sin. The sheriff pulled the deed, the VIN numbers off in there for us. And this, this U-Bet, you mentioned it earlier, this U-Bet is the prime example, starting with state end. I suspect if Mr. Bath will come forward with the titles, if that's the case, then I think it's going to take that type of leverage. Keep it in that. I would suggest starting with the blue truck that sat down there, it had B. A. Motel down there, basically. What's in the, the two best westerns? What was the one that was? Main Motel?
No.
Silver State. It was the one right by the Silver State, and they had that junk motel there.
It's the Silver State.
And that, that truck sat there for years. And so you know it's not mine.
The order of operation, then, correct me if I'm wrong, would be, we get a notice from the judge to abate the property. We would then notice the property owner and give the VIN numbers and then notice these people that if his vehicles will be removed at such and such a date, you can either remove them beforehand or we will remove them in the back charge to the property owner.
And that's part of the due process.
Is that the order of operation of what would happen?
Yes.
I would welcome anybody who wants to take the VIN numbers. It's fine with me.
Okay. Do I have a motion for further questions? You're kind of sitting way out over here, this time, your hand. Don't make it, nor you. There's nobody sitting here. I keep forgetting over here. Is there a motion from the council on? Motion to approve if they abate them.
I'll second it.
Second from Councilman Hall. Is there any further questions or discussions? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, Mr. Peter. All right. City, new business, Mayor Robertson, federal housing authority, NRAH, deputy executive director, Michon Hurst. Discussion for possible actions, approval of resolution twenty twenty one dash zero six, providing for the transfer of the city to the twenty twenty one private activity bond volume cap to the federal housing authority. As I understand, this is something we do annually. Do we have someone? Is it the director, Mr.?
Yes.
Is there anything you'd like to add to that, Mr.? If you could hold on for just one second, we're having trouble hearing you. They're going to adjust the volume here, but. The volume there coming in with computer. The volume on Jennifer's computer. Okay, why don't you go ahead?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you better. Are we good?
Yeah, it's here.
Could you try to begin, Mr.? Yes, sir. Anyway, you have your backup documentation, your letter. Like I said, this is fairly routine. We do it annually. Are there any questions about this? Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Period. So ordered. Item two, this nominee has removed himself from consideration due to concerns with COVID. We don't have anything to go on there. If you know anybody, yeah, the utility board, please have them bring in Mr. Hall. Yep.
Yeah, right.
Item three, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, first reading of ordinance seven four three, bill twenty twenty one dash zero six, with approval removed for the second reading. Ordinance seven forty three, immense title five, chapter five of the city code of the city, the seventy four hours designated for public use of the city parks. These are some tweaks to bring it along with the counties. Recently adopted, currently admitted, easier for enforcement for our sheriff department. Are there any questions, whether the attorney's event or this, or police chief, who's worked on this as well?
I make motion to approve the first reading.
We have a motion to approve the reading. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilwoman Williams Harper. Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Period. So ordered. Item four, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible actions. Performance evaluation of city building official Lee Walker, including but not limited to consideration of character, allegiance, conduct, professional competence, or physical link of health. Possible actions include, but is not limited to termination, suspension, the motion to deflection pay, reprimand, motion of gross to engagement, retention, or no action. Good evening.
Good evening.
How's it going?
Pretty good.
So this is just part of our ongoing annual. Let me help me with the words here.
Review, I think.
Personnel, personnel reviews for our city officials. Our building inspector, Lee Walker, has been here for an entire year. But it is coming up on his six month evaluation period. So we're doing this along with the one we did last meeting, the treasurer, the clerk. We'll be doing the judge who has to be included on this at the next meeting. Questions, comments, or the building inspector?
My first comment would be one we're very, very dissatisfied in his performance.
Did you pass your test the other day? Would you get it taken again?
I took it last Friday, and I did not ask.
How does, how does that work with? Do you have a certain time to repay it, or do you have to be?
Yeah, on the ICC website, you have, you can take the test anytime, twenty four seven, online. And you have up to six times to pass. Otherwise, if you don't, then basically you have to wait another six months to take it. So this is my.
So you can't take this test for other, or you have six times?
No, I have six times.
If you don't pass any of those six times, then you have to wait six months.
Yes, that's correct.
How confident are you that you'll be taking this test early soon and you can pass it on the second program?
I feel very confident in this next one. My first attempt, I was not very prepared. Didn't manage my time very well. But I plan to take it next Friday.
The deadline for the contract for him to have the residential pass is September first. His contract is signed on March first.
So he's got one more shot at it, then our next meeting?
For, for the contract.
For retain, well, I would move to table this item until our next meeting, if we pass it in the test. We already have no action, but I'd rather table this and come right back. Oh, wait, the next meeting is the thirty first?
The next meeting is on the thirty first because of the legal city, which is a constitutionally.
We still, we still discuss it at that time?
Well, I.
Look, but that's just my opinion.
Do you have anything you'd like to share about how the job's going or kind of where you're?
It's a lot different than what I expected, for sure. There's a lot to it. And it's not just the city that I represent, I represent the county as well. And this month is going to be more stressful, so to speak, because Jennifer's gone pretty much a whole month. So it's just going to be me in the office. So that's me answering the phones, emails, not to mention inspections, not to mention more testing, studying. It's, it all accounts, and it takes a lot.
You try to elaborate somewhat with this satisfaction or something?
One of my concern is I've had numerous emails sent to Lee, no response. It's like I'm sending it to the black hole. He gets back to me, his response is not very good in my request. And each of my requests, Lee, I felt were very well. You know the home on nine hundred block of Avenue C, we got a big problem with that. I called you on it, you overlooked it, and they were done and gone. That's just an example. And I admit, some of his problem is he's out with the county. Again, I'll go back to add that to the list of the landfill, cemetery, let the county get their own building inspector. Because he spent a lot of time outside the city doing stuff, you know, Brad's here, we're going to. But his follow-up was terrible, terrible. I went to the city clerk about this. I said, the way I run it, I ask a question, I want an answer. I don't want to have to keep sending emails. Phone calls do not work with Lee. You send a phone call, you never, I never got back to you until I started sending typed memos to you. And then it's usually a day later, with the exception of this last week, boom, you get around on it. Because I think you knew this was coming up. You know, you're an intelligent person. You need to take, read that contract. Your tardiness is unacceptable. I asked, that's my right to ask the staff, does he come to work on time? No, no. Late again, missing meeting, missing appointments with contractors, unsatisfactory.
I don't ever remember missing an appointment with a contractor.
Well, that was one of the comments I got from the staff, the contractors are here waiting and you won't show up or you'll show up late. You, you need to put on your, your game shoes here. Because this is, this is serious stuff. We've got people, one action. And again, I probably sent more emails to you, but now I've afforded them for better action to the clerk and to the mayor. So they're seeing the lack of response from my questions. Well, no, no, they don't got a criminal check on it. I made the wrong one. But what really upsets me is when I tell you something or email you something saying, these contractors or whoever roofed in these two houses, they're going to be done in one day, and they were, and they were gone.
Well, I, I don't know what day that was, but.
Yeah, I was right there in an office talking to you and Brad, Vernon Brad's property. Remember that? Those two traders?
Yes, I do remember that. And I remember following up with them. And I went to his house and I knocked on his door for half an hour because the guy could not get around because he has cancer. I have given him numerous phone calls along with messages left, and I gave no response.
Okay, so what, the problem with that property is what?
The problem with.
Those two, those two traders, what's the problem?
They did not get permitting, and they're manufactured homes, and they're only allowed to have one layer of some form of protection, whether it be a metal roof or shingles. They went over the top of the shingles, which is not.
And I don't know why you never run down there, go down there, walk down, where do you have to to get there? So those roofs are on there illegally. And by law, the owner, and I understand Mr. Brad is very ill, they need to be ripped off and done correct. What a waste, because somebody didn't want to jump on it and go down and look at it. I'm busy doing a plan review. It's a ten minute drive down there. To me, that's just one example. You can roll your eyes all you want.
I'm not rolling my eyes, sir. But I don't think it's fair for one person to dictate my time. When I'm with somebody, especially Brad, who I'm doing a plan review with, which is very, goes with my training. I need to be there.
I think a good trainer would be take the experience building inspector with you, go down, how do we go handle this? A certified registered letter. I mean, I'm not going to ask that guy to tear the roof up because once again, the city failed to do the right thing.
Do you, do you feel you have a plan going forward to address some of the issues brought up?
Yeah, I've been in conversation with Patty. She's going to help me with a spreadsheet, much like their complaints. Anything that comes to my office, it will be dated, it will be timed. And depending on what my schedule is for that day, if people have already set aside a time for me to be there, I need to be there for those people. And if I get time between those things, then things will be done.
You're talking about a spreadsheet like the regular complaints?
Yes, yes, but it will be for code enforcement.
I see. So there's certain follow-up and dates?
Yeah, just like anybody calls my office, it'll be, it'll be documented, and I will get to it when I can. But I cannot debase for my schedule when people a lot of time want me to be there.
Well, and as far as, as far as, as you know, the however you word it, the difficulty in that, that the job is, is a lot more than you expected or different than you expected. I mean, do you feel you're getting a better handle on time management? And, and coming up with the priority list and what is to be handled as a time sensitive matter and what could be pushed off? You see that going forward?
Yes.
May I ask?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
You have a test to pass, and this is the first time you've taken the test?
This last Friday was, yes.
I just want to ask why you waited so long and so close to the time where you know you need to pass it?
Well, with the day to day stuff, it's hard for me to study. And it's hard to, when people fill up my schedule, you know, it's hard to just pencil it in.
But when you have to have a certification to do a job, that means you have to do that in the evening, in the middle of the night, or you can't because you can't do it during the job to get, to get it done. So you've really left yourself in a bind with only being able to have one more chance. I just, you know, the thing is to take it right away, to see where you went wrong, then so you can study to take it again. But you have really left yourself no time to learn what you need to learn to pass your test because you waited till the twelve, the eleventh hour.
I'd like to ask, I think it's in the thirteen hundred block of Avenue G. I sent you a text about a house, he's been roofing it for over a month. Got, it's a steep roof, he's got two white floors on there, and you said it's not permitted. So I think he said it wasn't permitted, put a stop work order notice on it. The guy, what's the follow-up? What, what's, okay. What did you do?
Okay, there was a stop work order put on it. That homeowner came in and purchased and did what she did, needed to do. And we penalized her for it, and she paid for her permit. And she is in, she provided a necessary credit for it, and we inspected it. It was, everything was up to where she was paid.
Okay, my heart heard how simple it would be to handle. Thank you very much. No feedback. I'm a person that I want to, I ask a question, I want a response, even if I don't like to answer it. I want some feedback.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments at this time, anything you'd like to add? We have a suggestion slash motion from Councilman Spear to put this back to the thirty first pending his pass or of a test.
Like that's the end of the six months, and he's got opportunity to have that between then and now. And I think, no, I think we can make a full decision on, if he performs it the second time in Denver, we go.
it a second time, then Denver, we go, but at least things, you need one more shot at that test.
You know, this, this is a type of situation.